Ladies and gentlemen, uh, welcome to our, uh, April twenty seventh special council meeting via video conference. Uh, I'd like to make some introductory remarks before we actually move into our, uh, formal agenda. Um, first of all, uh, all of the members of the council and, uh, appropriate staff are online here, uh, in individual locations, separate locations, uh, and that is why we are without masks, uh, coming to you today. Um, uh, under the authorization provided by Senate Bill six, six, one, the special city council meeting will be conducted via video conferencing in lieu of our traditional in-person meeting format. The meeting is utilizing Zoom, uh, video conferencing platform, uh, that went live approximately five minutes before the scheduled meeting time. Uh, just some general rules that we will be following today. Uh, the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act requires the public be allowed to observe the meeting. Uh, opportunities for the public to observe this special city council, uh, video conferencing meeting, uh, are available via our GT, uh, GTV twenty on, uh, Cox, uh, channel twenty. Uh, live streaming is also being provided by the city, uh, Facebook page at WWW FACEBOOK DOT COM FORWARD Slash City of Guthrie. Also, live streaming is available on the Guthrie News Page at WWW DOT FACEBOOK DOT COM FORWARD Slash Guthrie News Page. Uh, the Open Meeting Act does not require the public to be given an opportunity to participate in the meeting. However, it has been our policy, uh, to give the public opportunity to present comments to the council. And with that in mind, uh, we have established a process and guidelines for the public, uh, to make comments, uh, via this video conferencing. Uh, public comments were to be submitted in advance to our city clerk, Kim Biggs, uh, via email, uh, prior to nine o'clock this morning. Uh, each person submitting a public comment was required to submit their name and address along with their comments, identify the topic and subject, uh, of their comments, limit their comments to approximately seven hundred and fifty words, which is about five minutes of speech. Uh, comments are limited to City of Guthrie residents or non-residents who either work for or operate a business in the City of Guthrie. Uh, the city clerk, uh, will send the public comments, either, uh, will read the public comments, uh, at the start of the meeting. Actually, I will be reading those comments, uh, at the start of the meeting. Uh, and, um, uh, if there are multiple comments on one topic, uh, since, uh, and it becomes obvious that the comments are overlapping, uh, we will, uh, read just one comment summarizing the two. Uh, we are recording this meeting and a copy will be placed, uh, in our City of Guthrie YouTube page and will remain on Facebook for future reference. Um, just, uh, just general comments. Um, you know, we're all striving to get through this, um, this challenge that we have, this, uh, um, um, we're in uncharted territory clearly, uh, with this, uh, uh, COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, it's a very fluid situation that changes, uh, and, uh, we, we just hope that, uh, all of the citizens of Guthrie, uh, will work with us to, uh, uh, make our community as safe as possible a place. Uh, we recognize that, um, emotions, uh, and stress are high, uh, for a number of reasons, uh, and, um, and there are a lot of unknowns on this pandemic, a lot of differences of opinion. Uh, we appreciate those opinions and we ask that you respect each other, uh, when, uh, we have debate. Debate is good, dialogue is good. Uh, just make sure that it is respectful, whether it's verbal or on social media. Um, if in fact, uh, the ordinance that we're going to be discussing today, uh, ordinance three, 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 one, uh, is adopted, which, uh, rescinds ordinance three, 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 zero, uh, the following are still applicable within the city limits of, uh, of Guthrie. Uh, the mayor's March sixteenth, two thousand twenty state of emergency proclamation shall remain, uh, effective until Tuesday, May twelfth, unless we terminate it earlier. Uh, Governor Stitz, open up and recovery, recover safely is ours plan, uh, three-phased approach to opening the Oklahoma economy, uh, which was published April twenty second, uh, and the, uh, governor's, uh, uh, executive order twenty twenty dash zero seven, uh, as amended, uh, are considered, uh, and are considered applicable to Guthrie. Uh, the City of Guthrie strongly recommends that individuals and local businesses consider can, can, uh, continue to follow CDC recommendations, uh, to include social distancing, washing hands with soap and water, avoid touching the face, disinfecting, uh, frequently used items and surfaces as much as possible, using face covering in public, uh, or when using mass trans, transit, uh, and stay at home and, and contact your doctors if you are in fact feeling sick. If for any reason we experience a reboot or a spike in the COVID nineteen cases going forward, uh, in our immediate area, the city council has the ability to call an emergency meeting to adopt new guidelines or directives appropriate to the situation at hand. And meantime, we'll be relying more and more on local residents and businesses and their commitment to continue the fight by diligently following the CDC recommendation, recommendations and the governor's open up and recovery safely plan as we safely, uh, strive to reopen our economy in a very, very safe manner. Those are preliminary comments, and now we'll actually start our meeting. I, I call to order our, uh, special city council meeting, uh, of April, uh, twenty seventh. Uh, and I'll start with a ro, re, uh, roll call of all who's on board. Councilman, uh, Long.
Here.
Vice Mayor Case.
Present.
Councilman Taylor.
Here.
Councilman Bothroyd.
Here.
Councilman Channel.
Here.
Councilwoman Paget.
Here.
And I am Mayor Steve Gettling presiding. Um, we do have six, um, citizen, um, comments that I will take the liberty to read. Um, some are pressing the seven hundred and fifty word comment, but, uh, I think we can get them all in. Um, so these are all obviously concerning the, uh, the major topic, uh, which is, um, our topic number two. Well, I, I guess I, I make, make sure that I call, uh, our meeting to order. Uh, item number two is the discussion of possible action of ordinance number three, 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 one. These comments all reflect, uh, uh, on that, uh, on that proposed ordinance. Uh, the first one is from Andrew Symington, uh, and he states, "I appreciate the ordinance put in place by the city council intended to keep control of the spread of COVID nineteen in our community and beyond. I am requesting that they be extended beyond which time it is safe to consider removing such restrictions. Medical staff and experts in the scientific community are unanimously warning us that it's too early to begin to open non-essential businesses and to continue to wear, uh, uh, the mask and stay at home as much as possible. As painful as it is, we must comply. Uh, the majority of citizens in Guthrie are complying with the ordinances and will continue to do so regardless of your decision today. We know that the masks help protect others from infection, and we will continue to wear them as a sign of respect for those around us and our love for this community. Removing these restrictions and allowing businesses to open will only make it more dangerous for everyone in our community, including those that are trying to be responsible. As of right now, we have no meaningful testing capabilities. In fact, I don't know, I don't know anyone that has been tested. Uh, with a lack of testing and reports of inaccurate testing results, why would we even consider making any changes to our current strategy? Unfortunately, our govern, our governor has made it clear he is willing to gamble with the lives of Oklahomans. We can do better. Are you willing to remove restrictions knowing that they could possibly cause a spike in COVID cases and death? How many people infected are death, uh, or dead is acceptable to you? Even with your restrictions in place, we will continue to have more cases and predictions are that there will be another wave this fall. Why, why make it worse? You took an oath when you were elected to city council. First line, uh, you committed to is act in the public's best, best interest. Many of us will be watching how each of you vote. Should you choose to reduce restrictions, uh, you need to practice what you preach. Open city hall, have city council meetings in city hall. Thank you for your service in these difficult and unique times." That was from Mr. Andrew Symington. Next one is from Mr. Uh, Daniel Smith. "I support, I support the mask rule put in place to protect our citizens. I believe it should be enforced. I believe until science shows that this virus is gone and/or a virus, a vaccine, uh, is available, we should continue acting on the CDC recommendations. Do not let a lawsuit stop you from doing the right thing. I expect many lawsuits to be filed against cities and businesses for not adequately protecting the population. Let math and science guide us. Remember, when we use math and science, you'll never have to lie." That was from citizen Danny Smith. Uh, I have, uh, a summary of a, uh, survey, uh, done by, uh, Kathy Hayes. Um, and this is a survey that reflects the City of Guthrie's shelter in place and mask ordinance is set to end May fifth. Oklahoma's shelter in place ends April thirtieth, and they are currently loosening, loosening some restrictions and starting to open. How do you feel? Um, there were a hundred and eighty-six respondents that said, "We'll move too quickly." There were forty-six respondents that said, "Moving at the right speed." There were twenty-two respondents that said, "Will take too long," and there were seven respondents that were not sure. Summary of a survey, uh, done, uh, by, uh, or posted by Kathy Hayes. Um, another comment by Nicole Piersol. Uh, uh, "I am the owner of Serenity Now Spa. I have been living and working in this community for fifteen years and own my, own, have owned my spa for ten years. Due to corroded, corroded nineteen, we have closed down since March twentieth. I closed down early, earlier than some because of the uncertainty of this virus and how it could affect my staff and our clients. I have eleven women, including myself, that work at our spa as independent contractors. We have no income at this time. This is a very challenging situation that I know many others are also experiencing. All of the details of this virus are not conclusive at this time, but we do have regulations set by the Oklahoma Cosmetology, Massage and Barbering Board that are very detailed. I do feel that if we adhere to these standards, we'll be doing all we can to maintain the health and well-being of all involved. I do, I don't, however, feel that it is something that our city should override. As many of you are not familiar with what we do and have not been into a spa, our client's safety is always our number one priority. We can regulate who comes and goes, and the cleanliness of all of our surroundings is better than most businesses. At this time, I would like to be able to open as of May first. We have been preparing our facilities to be able to meet all guidelines set forth by our board that governs our business. We've had staff meetings to prepare all involved to follow these new procedures. We will only be taking our current clients at this time. Our spa will be taking temperatures and having our clients sign a consent form in the parking lot before entering. They will be taken directly into the treatment room and will remain there until they leave. We have allowed extra time between sessions to properly disinfect the areas that, uh, they have contact with. All will be wearing masks as, as the services allow. As to the elderly and more vulnerable clients, there will be extra precautions taken based upon their specific needs. I know not all clients and therapists will be resuming, uh, their normal treatments at this time, and it is, uh, it is a very personal, personal choice to do so. But for those who want to, they should have the right to do so. I have personally talked to many salon owner, owners and members of our staff in our town, and we are all on the same page. We should do the right thing. We should choose to do the right thing. We should, we can regulate who comes into our business much better than the ones who have opened throughout this pandemic. Please take these things into consideration when choosing to lift this current strict regulations you have enforced under ordinance, uh, three, three, zero, zero. Uh, I have another comment from, uh, Tanya Zamora, owner of the Second Avenue Spa and Salon. I have lived in Guthrie for fourteen years. My salon has been operating here for twelve. Due to the COVID restrictions, uh, our doors have been closed since March twenty-sixth. I have seven girls that operate my salon as independent contractors. Not being able to work at, at the salon means they are not being able to provide for their families or pay for business expenses such as rent and utilities. We're eager to get back to work in servicing our community and understand the work that will be going into keeping everyone safe. Uh, the Department of Cosmetology has very specific guidelines to follow. Uh, as always, the safety of our clients is first and foremost. We are not a large store. We have the ability to take measures needed to make sure that we are doing our part at this difficult time. We will be taking everyone's temperature, sanitizing and questioning all those who enter. Of course, it'll be by appointment only. Ourselves and our clients will be wearing masks or face coverings as the service allows. Clients will be spaced out, uh, as, uh, proper sanitation offer is done between and after each client. Out of all of us work, uh, at the same time, so not be get, there will not be, uh, a gathering. Uh, we will follow the guidelines, uh, that, uh, we are given. Uh, we want to work and provide, uh, for our needs. Please give us our choice. Uh, many counties are opening May first. If Logan County continues to keep business closed, some Guthrie residents will head elsewhere to get their services taken care of. We would like the chance to serve our locals, citizens. Please take this into consideration when signing, deciding to lift the restrictions. That is by, again, citizen Tanya Zamora. Uh, and last, I have, uh, a comment by citizen Cherie Gordon. Uh, "As a small business, I do not understand why it cannot be opened by May first. As you know, it is just me who runs this place with occasional help from my husband. We seldom have more than four or five people in the shop at one time. For those of us who have worked hard and spent hard-earned money to open a business and build a class, customer base, it is an extreme hardship to be closed so long. I appreciate the council and the hard work everyone puts into keeping our city going. I am asking that you please remove the restriction for us so that we can continue to run the businesses we love. Also, if the mask rule could be changed so that we can go out on daily exercise, running, walking, biking without masks, it would be great. If one thing, it will help everyone, uh, it will be, i- i- if one thing can help everyone, it would be breathing fresh air and having sunshine on our face. Um, we will abide the rules that are set forth out of respect for, for the council, but in my opinion, those who want to be open should be able to be open. There will be some who will decide to stay closed a little longer, and I support that choice, but please let, uh, let this be up to the individual stores. We are respectful of the sto, social distancing rule and will be aware of how many people are in the shop. Thanks for hearing me out. I am certain as business people, you understand the plight of the little guy. God bless." Uh, from business owner and citizen Cherie Gordon. Uh, those are then the, uh, public comments. Uh, and so now I would like to continue with, uh, our item number two on the agenda, which is the discussion of possible action on ordinance number three, 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 one, uh, that, uh, amends the, uh, City of Guthrie Code of Ordinance Chapter Eleven, uh, Health and Safety by rescinding Article Seven Emergency Measures Related to COVID nineteen pandemic in its entirety, uh, repealing all conflicting ordinances and providing for, uh, severity, severity and declaring an emergency. Um, so I'll open it up to, uh, council for your comments concerning the, uh, proposed, uh, change, uh, with, uh, ordinance number three, 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 one.
As a clarification, Billy.
Yes.
We're amending, we're not rescinding. Is that correct?
Correct.
The approach, the proposed three, 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 one is amending, not rescinding. Yes.
That's correct. Okay, uh, city council, comments? Your thoughts on the proposed ordinance?
I do have something that I need to say, if that's okay.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, okay. Most of the calls that I've received, in fact, the largest majority of the calls I've received have been from members of the, um, cosmetology, cosmetology community, those that have, uh, hair salons. And apparently, the cosmetology board has absolutely ramped up their requirements to, their, their require, requirements are almost stricter than the ones we propose, other than the fact that we are wanting to not open until mid-May. Um, respectfully, they have requested that I suggest they are allowed to open on May first with the restrictions set in place by the cosmetology board. Um, this is something that I've just recently received, and I wanted to pass that along because I did get so many calls about it.
Okay, okay. So they're, they're basically, um, uh, self, self policing, if you will, uh, by their cosmetology, uh, board. And that was reflected in, in both the letters, uh, that I read, too.
Right. Apparently, they're going to be required to meet the people in the parking lot, escort them in, do what they have to do, take them out, clean. They have to clean. Everything has to be wiped down with alcohol substance for that person either sat or touched or was anywhere near before the next person can even be at, you know, escorted in. So that reflects to me almost overkill on the cleaning, but they're willing to do it. And that I was asked to pass that along because most of them are self-employed and have no other income at all. So that's my only remark. I do understand their plight and might even be, I, I would support total cleaning like the, uh, cosmo, I can't even talk, the cosmetology board has suggested, but I think that we need to leave in place the masks, um, especially of the shop owners while they're working with people or the general public to be out in public with a mask. So, uh, everything else I am totally in compliance with and would support whatever the rest of the board decides with the council.
For, for the public's benefit, why don't you give a list of what we're changing in this? Or what the proposed changes are?
Well, basi, basically, the proposed changes are to follow the, um, the direct, uh, direction, uh, that the governor has laid out, uh, in opening up the, the dates that the governor has established for opening up certain things. Obviously, um, the, the opening up of, uh, barber shops, beauty salons, that, so forth, that date has already passed us. That was yesterday, uh, on the governor. So, uh, what this, what this ordinance would include would be opening up, um, immediately if we in fact adopt, uh, the ordinance, uh, and, uh, approve the emergency clause. Uh, it would also then reflect, uh, that, uh, May thirtieth, uh, I'm sorry, May first, uh, that, um, restaurants could open. Um, and, uh, um, and then the governor's statement would, was that, uh, his next phase would be approximately fourteen days after that, uh, which would continuing loosening up, uh, uh, businesses throughout the, uh, state, depending upon what's happening with, uh, various, uh, markers on this COVID nineteen. It appears to me that the, that the governor is particularly the focused on the number of hospitalizations. Um, as you all know, here in, in Guthrie and Logan County, uh, we have, uh, I believe our numbers are still at ten. Uh, is that correct?
Eleven.
Pardon?
Are you talking about cases? Are you talking about total cases or?
Yeah. Yes.
In Guthrie, we're at eleven.
I think that's Logan. I think, uh, we need to be careful. There's two different numbers out there. One is Logan County and one is Guthrie.
Logan County is at thirteen.
Okay.
And Guthrie is at eleven.
It's eleven, so it's gone up one. Um, but, uh, anyway, from.
I thought Guthrie was, hold on a second. I thought Guthrie was only three, James.
I pulled the numbers this morning. No, Guthrie's at eleven. On the twenty-fourth, we were at nine.
But that was Logan County, right?
No, sir. Logan County on the twenty-fourth was at eleven. Guthrie was at nine. Today, I pulled the numbers again. Now Guthrie is at eleven, and Logan County is at thirteen.
Is that, is that from the, uh, James, is that from the county health, uh?
That's from the health, the health.gov where you can break it down into counties and cities.
Right, right.
And no deaths, correct?
That also reflects the number of recovered. Could you tell us that number?
So, City of Guthrie, we have, um, eleven total cases, eight recovered and zero deaths. Logan County has thirteen total cases, nine recovered and zero deaths.
Okay, alright. Yeah, that's a good, that's a great website, by the way. I looked at it last night.
So, I don't know that you were real clear on what's being changed on this ordinance. I know, I know that, you know, the proposal is we follow the governor's, you know, I want to make one statement. When we did this, it's been over a month now, right? Is that, March sixteenth is when it was done, right? Uh, I believe, um, you know, we tried to do something a couple of weeks or so prior to that, and, and we didn't because the majority of council didn't want to do that, and the consensus was to follow the governor's, um, recommendation, along with following the CDC and the White House and everything else. Well, we did that. Uh, and so we enacted this, and now the governor's saying it's time to open. I don't know that I agree with that or not personally, probably not so much, but I think that it's time to start slowly opening, for sure. Um, I don't, I don't see how we can continue, um, to stay shut down. Um, my original plan, or my original theory was give it thirty days and that'll level things off. And I think that, you know, the last month or so, since we've been doing this shelter in place, uh, maybe that's the reason we only have eleven total cases or thirteen in the county. Uh, had we not done that, maybe it would have been significantly more. Uh, just like the mask thing, you know? Had we not implemented that, maybe, uh, we'd be in the hundreds. You don't know where we'd be. Um, but I think it's time, uh, to, if we're gonna, if we originally started this to follow the governor's recommendation, then I, I think, how do, I don't know that we change that right now. This whole, the whole, uh, other scenario where, you know, a, a suit has been enabled out there, um, you know, we didn't, we're not the ones that went in and said churches can't gather. Okay, that was from the state level. Okay, uh, that's just, that's just the reality of it. Uh, you know, you can't gather in groups of more than ten. Um, we're gonna re, we don't need to relieve that because that's again, a state mandate, the way I look at it. Uh, I guess we, you know, we just reaffirmed that in our meeting that we had, and the only thing we really added to it was that instead of safer at home, a shelter in place, which everybody still can move around anyway. The, the big thing we put in play was a mask, uh, and we probably should keep that in play moving forward a while longer till we see what's happening. Uh, for those that don't want to start opening up, you can stay home. You know, there's a lot of things out there that people, uh, can do to protect themselves, uh, just like when you're going to the store, uh, or the pharmacy, or if you're going out there running on the trails or whatever you're doing, you just have to protect yourself and your family. Uh, so that's my position. I think we keep, it's kind of like Cheryl's. I think we keep the mask in play, uh, and, uh, we start following the governor's, uh, deal like we started out doing.
Can I?
Yeah. Yes.
So, question was asked, what has changed in this new ordinance? And I kind of want to go through a little bit and, and make sure we're all on the same page. So, we take out section eleven dash one twenty-two, which is shelter in place, um, by taking out the shelter in place from our ordinance, we fall back upon the governor's, um, reopening policy. In that, we remove the essential business definitions, um, from our ordinance. We, we fall back completely on the governor. When you go farther down, um, we take out all issues with public transit, which was one twenty-six, eleven, one twenty-seven was established, which was without premises on food service. We removed that language. One twenty-eight was the establishment with on pre, on premises food service. We removed that language. Public fitness, entertainment venues was one twenty-nine. We removed. Public fitness, entertainment venues was one twenty-nine, we removed the language from that. And Cheryl specifically to you, eleven dash one thirty with slants, spas, et cetera, we remove those requirements. So basically by doing that, and also we were, we, uh one thirty-one is the organized gatherings of ten or more people. We remove all that language, by removing those, we fall back on the governor's requirements. We do leave. We do leave the the face mask.
Stays in place?
Yes.
The face mask stays in place.
But it goes on to clarify about the face mask. And me, it was the way I think we intended it anyway, right, it's in in that paragraph there, it says uh. If you can't enforce the social distancing, if you get in a situation where. There's more of you, like you're going in a store or something like that, that's when the mask is required, you know, after our last meeting, I had people ask me. Can I not go outside without my mask, well, you know, yeah, I did. And I think a lot of other people did, it's more if you're going out and you're gonna be interacting with people. Whether it be in a store or a a group, that's what the CDC is talking about, is that? Is that the way I'm interpreting that, Billy?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Yeah, I I think if you feel that there's potential that the social distancing could be compromised, you need to have the mask on.
And I agree with that, if you're going into a store or uh someplace of uh business. You should probably have the mask, but if you're just exercising around the temple, I don't think that it should be required.
I think some people, it was probably on us, we didn't clarify it that well the last time. You know, when we talked about wearing the mask, but. And I might have been doing it wrong, but then the people that I had asked me, you know, they said, well, I go run, do I have to have to wear a mask? And I said, you know, use common sense, if you're just out there running, you're fine. Have your mask with you in case you run into a group of people or you have to interact with somebody, then put it on. And I think that was our intent from what I gather, and I think this measure kinda. Clarify that a little bit, so that everybody didn't.
Right, right.
They don't, don't think every mug they see has to have a mask on.
Oh, just like in in just like what the governor says and what the president says and everybody else says out there, I mean, if things start spiking. And you know, you know, in today's times, you know that in a day, just like the info you're getting, James. I didn't even realize it broke it down to the city level and I'll, if you could text me that or something, I'd appreciate it or uh, cuz I didn't know that. Uh so but I do know that we get numbers daily, so if you start seeing an increase, we can have a meeting and we can put things right back in play. Like they were prior to this meeting, uh and we can do it real time.
Yeah, that's 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 absolutely a proviso, if we see a spike or a change in anything, uh we can obviously. Um call another uh uh special meeting and uh and take whatever action we feel is appropriate at that time.
Do you guys have any idea of what you think that what that spike would look like? Cause I mean, we we are a commuter commuter community, I mean, people leave Guthrie to go to work, they leave Guthrie to do lots of things. And as I was looking at total cases, I I didn't pull up Oklahoma City specifically, but I did pull up Edmond and I pulled up Stillwater. Cause I know a lot of people travel to those communities, we're at a total case count of eleven, Stillwater's at twenty-two. Um and Edmund's at a hundred and twenty-five, Edmund actually has deaths, they have six deaths, uh Stillwater. So I don't know, where do we?
Who?
Uh they Stillwater has one, is what I read yesterday.
According to the uh Department of Health website this morning, it it still said zero, so maybe they haven't updated that, I I don't know.
But James, I think we should be looking at the cities like Edmund and Oklahoma City and the bigger communities, Tulsa's. And see what's going on, since we are commuter commuter type city, most of our people are going to Edmund or Oklahoma City. And if they're commuting and if we keep an eye on what's going on with those cities. Then I think we can make a a determination at that point, do we need to pull back? Uh maybe it doesn't have to be a Guthrie proper deal as much as it is happening within the communities of the state, just a thought.
Well, I've got a question, is the only thing that's gonna remain the mask ordinance, is that the only thing that will remain, Billy?
No, it's not, it's gonna, all of the things that dealt with the city of Guthrie. From the um collection of utilities to courts being closed, the city hall being closed, those are all still in this.
Well, there's also uh gatherings of ten or more on city properties that is still in this.
Yeah.
But but that's part of the state proclamation, is it not?
No, no, that's part of, that's all part of ours.
Ours, yeah.
I thought the ten or more came higher up and we just adopted it in.
Even if you read this from the from the president, the whole open America again, it it. It discusses no more than ten or more in phase one.
Yeah, it was already that way, I don't think that was really part of our, I mean, maybe it is part of our ordinance, but. It was just kinda thrown in there because it was already part of what we were.
It is. It 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 was, it was a part of our original ordinance of, it was a part of thirty-three thirty-three. Thirty, but it is being rec uh deleted under thirty-three thirty-one.
Right, and so the only thing we've got left is the mask ordinance really. The mask and the restrictions on people, that's the only thing that's left and it's common sense and they ought to just do it. And anybody that's gonna get out in the public is gonna do it, if they're concerned about their lives and their family, they're gonna do it, I don't think we need to tell them anymore. I think we've showed them.
Yeah, but let's be real clear, this does not repeal ten or more on city property.
Oh.
Okay, that's still in effect.
Right, but it's it would be in effect anyway, cuz the president said it. That's all I'm saying, we're not really doing it.
No, the governor's saying something different, um so.
Well, anyway, I just, as far as I'm concerned, if the only thing we've got on there is that mask, that that's really restricting people. Then I think we go ahead and rescind the whole dagum thing and just tell them, you know, guys, we don't want you to change anything about what you do. Do exactly what you're doing, you're doing it right and it's working, but you don't need me to tell you to do it.
Well, Jim, that's what we're, Jim, that's what we're doing in this ordinance if we adopt it. So the only thing we're not thinking is the the ten of the gathering of ten or more. If you get rid of that, what that does is that doesn't allow for parades, that doesn't allow for. Uh that, you know, communions in the in the park type thing where you got fifteen hundred, two thousand people at mineral wells, that type thing. Uh you know, all that stays in play. In this ordinance.
Well, and Walmart already has a mask law, basically, nobody can go to Walmart without wearing a mask.
Yeah, so does Walgreens have that too, I didn't realize.
I've heard that too.
Yeah, and 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 uh Jim, I I I understand what you're saying. Um I'm I'm a a pretty significant advocate uh of uh. Uh I'm definitely a significant advocate of wearing the mask, but I think that we need to ha- keep that in our ordinance. I think I think we, there's a message, if that's taken out, that people are saying, well, it's, I guess it's okay now. It's okay just to go outside, I know you under, I know what you're saying, that people should be um having the, taking the responsibility themselves. But I think it sends a message, I think it sent a message when we first included the the ma- the mask. Uh not as uh highly recommend, but that you shall wear the mask. Uh and um I I think I think that has uh has helped us in terms of our numbers, now we'll never know.
But I I just think the message has already gotten across, they know to wear a mask.
I I don't, I don't think we should back off of that.
Okay.
I disagree. I mean, I think if we look at, if we look at what the president's plan was for individuals, it does, I mean, it's it stays strongly consider using. Base coverings while in public and particularly when using uh mass transit, so it it's telling us that we we should use. Base coverings in faith. It does say also avoid socializing in groups more than ten people. In circumstances that do not readily allow for appropriate physical distancing, um then.
Well, and I've had several people that work in businesses here, like gas stations and that kinda stuff. The other day I walked into one and there were three people working in there. And when they heard we were gonna vote on this, their big push to me was, please don't take the mask thing away, we feel like we're trapped in here. And we're glad that it's there because the majority of people coming in do respect it and are wearing their mask and they said. Us being here having to take anybody that walks in the door, we want it there, we don't think it's ready for it to go.
And but I also think that businesses have the the luxury of being able to say. No mask, no service, they can already tell you no shirt, no shoes, no service, no mask, no service.
I mean, right. And 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 James, I would, I would hope other businesses would follow what apparently cosmetology uh directive has been. Uh that, you know, if you wanna come into my my uh salon or or spa, yeah, you need to have a mask on. Apparently, that's what their direction is to read, uh just in reading those two letters from our citizens.
I just think that a lot of the communication that we get from people that don't want things to open, aren't involved in businesses that are have been. Heavily affected and obviously the letters, the people that want things to open are in businesses that are heavily.
Yeah.
So I.
What we've, what we've done, what we've done is we've given thirty, forty days, whatever the number has been at this point. In um in an attempt to flatten out this whole curve. Which I think that, you know, we don't know if we've done or not, because like we already talked about, had we not worn masks or put any of this to play. Maybe we still only had eleven in Guthrie, but since we, maybe we would have had hundreds, we don't know. What the, what the end result would be in it, uh look at Edmund, they didn't put masks in play. Okay, and so they got a much bigger number, but they've got a lot more people as well, so. I mean, at the, we can't, at the end of the day, I think you need to do whatever you need to do to protect your families. And your neighbors constantly on this deal and uh but. You know, it was a consensus that we followed the CDC and the governor's recommendation on this whole thing from the start. And I don't know how we change that now, uh we have to keep following the same deal and so. You know, it it it's probably time and then, you know, like I say, if there's a spike. By looking at the big cities and the communities around us in our own town, and I don't know what that is, James, maybe that's something that we have a discussion about. Uh then we pull this all back and we put a shelter in place back in, um. My original intent was to give the thirty days plus to try to bend the curve here and um that's it for me.
Okay.
Restaurants, I think it's a tough one looking at restaurants, cuz we have some restaurants that are large, you know, like the stables. And like Stacy's Place, but then we have some that are very small and tight quarters like Katie's diner or Simone's, I mean, I, they don't have the same. Luxury, but uh uh as far as square footage to be space tables apart, but also I don't think we should be letting um buffets. Open back up, to be quite honest, I don't think people should be touching the same. Long tongs, whatever, to to be able to gather their food, I think that those things would remain uh not available to them, I mean, I don't know. I don't know of all the restaurants, how many are buffets, I know that the Chinese buffet, I know that um table. But I think those things did not be open.
Personally, that's gonna have to be up to the business owner and the people at that point, I mean, how can you say we can open the restaurants, but you can't open yours? You know?
Yeah, I I think that's the tough question we have, like, I mean, the ones that are smaller, I mean, do do they open, can they open if they can't space tables? Six feet apart, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
They they they've still got that requirement of social distancing, so they've gotta figure, they've gotta figure out a way um to meet those requirements.
And I do also, I do wanna make, so the public knows that's watching this, that we only have seven days left basically to our original ordinance. Okay, and things have seemed to have flattened, the governor has made. Different phased openings, uh the CDC uh CDC still has recommendations that you should be following. And that we're, we're gonna be following and we're gonna keep masks in play, so you know.
Don, I think you uh started to make a motion.
I did, I would make a motion that we adopted as written, adopt this amendment as written. And then we can look at it down the road if we need to change it, but for the time being.
So who who made the second?
I did, second.
Okay.
James was, I wanted to hear the rest of what James was saying there real quick.
I I think, I think there's two things, to be honest, I think that our governor has went ahead and wanting to open the state. Because relatively speaking, our case counts are lower than other states, but also I think that it it's also, I think we should. We should know that our case count isn't necessarily coming down as a state, I I charted it for the entire month of April. And are not, we're not seeing a de- a steady decline in new cases, I mean, on four twenty-four. We still had a hundred and four, a hundred and four cases, uh uh new cases of covid nineteen around the state. Now, compared to larger states with larger population, that's not, our total case count, you were still a lighter shade of color. Uh on the, on the map, but I I I think that it's important to note that our our total case count really isn't showing a steady decline yet.
So.
Not showing.
I I think, I think.
So what are you saying?
Some of that was predictable because as the number of t- testings go up. Uh they're probably gonna identify more positives, I I I don't think that that was unpredictable.
Okay.
And I and I think maybe that's why the governor is more uh seems to be more focused on hospitalizations as opposed to just cases.
Well, just remember, our original ordinance, if we don't do, if we don't vote this, goes another seven days.
Right, right.
Goes to May fourth.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second uh to adopt ordinance number three 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 one, uh is there any other discussion?
Could we get a clarification on how that's written, I mean, Don said as written, but I don't know that I understand. What I'm voting on, to be quite honest.
It's taking everything out but a mask.
I think, I think, I think our attorney, I think Billy pretty much identified. The things that are deleted from the previous ordinance from ordinance number uh three 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 zero.
And we're deferring.
Not until this Friday.
It's it's taking everything out but the masks and it's keeping ten or less people on city br- on city grounds.
It's keeping all of the, all of the provisions that dealt with the city, the city courts, city hall. Um library being closed, all the provisions that dealt with the city are still in place. It's removing the shelter in place and the definition of all the different non-essential businesses. It's removing all private business references and letting those go to the governor. It is maintaining the face mask and maintaining all of the city restrictions on city.
So I guess my question is too, could we be a little bit more detailed in on city property, what's maintaining closure, like? For instance, I know we have um, you know, parks, the 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 uh. The equipment is closed and should be closed, kids don't know how to social distance, but I've also been told that we have our um our disc golf. Closed, why is our disc golf closed, why can't people disc golf?
I I think it's touch, it's touching the the cylinder that the disc goes in, I think is where the concern is, James. Um on that one, on the disc, just like, just like on regular golf, uh initially they were talking about, don't remove, don't touch the pin. Uh on the green, um and I I think that's where, it's that, it's that surface. Uh tha- that the basket, that the disc i- is, it goes on on each hole is is where the concern was there, James.
Okay.
Okay, well, again, we have a have a motion and a second, uh we will go through a uh. A uh.
But do you know what you're voting on, James, I wanna be real clear here.
Sounds like we're repealing everything except, or not repealing, but bringing everything back except the masks. And social uh and continuing to enforce social distancing to allow. I'm guessing restaurants, retail, all private business to reopen?
That would follow the governor's plan.
And what date does this all take effect?
Um oh, this ordinance?
Yes.
The ordinance would take effect i- i- uh our next item on the agenda, if we approve this agenda. If we approve I uh the ordinance three 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 one, we have an emergency uh declaration. On our next agenda item, so all of this would take effect immediately.
Well, twelve oh one tonight, right?
Let's vote.
So Cherie could reopen her store tomorrow if she wanted.
One question, oh, I think everybody received a a text, but uh to clarify. We are gonna keep the masks requirement place. Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to make sure. Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to make sure.
All right, let's be clear again. We're keeping all of the city distancing in place on all city properties and we're keeping the mask in place. The only thing we're repealing is the restaurants. We're going back to, uh, businesses, uh, at the governor's, uh, phased plan versus our plan. That's what we're doing.
That's correct. We're fol, following the governor's plan.
Cause I don't want anybody voting on something that they don't know what they're voting on.
So, Goodwill can open back up tomorrow if they so choose.
Uh, I don't, I don't know where that stood in the governor's plan, James. I'm, I'm sorry.
Like, the governor's not let, James, the governor's plan doesn't allow bars to open yet, for example.
And I get that, I get that. But, but, I mean, we've got people in retail that wants to know.
Yeah, I would think that they'd be able to open.
I think, but, but what do I, I don't know. I think retail's May first, according to the governor's plan.
So, hair salons though are immediately.
Yes. That, that would, that would be immediate, uh, because actually the governor's plan, they, they were, they could open up on Monday, but not on, not in Guthrie.
Okay, so, so barber shops, salons, they can open up immediately. Retail is May one.
Right.
Restaurants is May one.
With certain stipulations.
Exactly.
And bars still cannot open at all.
That's correct.
That's a phase two, is my understanding.
Yeah, that was target, that was targeted to be, uh, about the fourteenth of, of.
Okay, I have a question. What about restaurant bars or restaurants that serve liquor at the table?
They can serve liquor at the table, but not at the bar.
Okay, clarification, thank you.
Again, I wanna clarify that all of those questions you're discussing don't have anything to do with the city of Guthrie if you pass this ordinance. They simply fall under the governor's plan.
Right. Well, I think where I wanna make sure we're clarified is we took the governor's plan previously and went way more restrictive. So, I wanna ensure that any more restriction that we took have all been lifted or, or what, what have you, that we're not.
Yeah, the only thing that's not lifted, James, is the congregating of more than ten on city property and the masks.
And that's masks in a public place, not walking your dog.
Right, or riding your bike or anything else.
Okay, okay.
Like, that's masks if you cannot social distance. You're going into Walmart, they're gonna make sure you wear a mask anyway. But if you're at church, you might, you know, and you can't social distance, then you should have a mask.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, let's vote.
We have, we, we have a motion and a second. Uh, we'll have a recall, uh, we'll have a, uh, vote by name, uh, Vice Mayor Case.
Aye.
Councilman Long.
Yes.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Bothroyd.
Aye.
Councilman Channel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Paget.
Aye.
Mayor Steve Gettling votes yes. So, unanimous approval of adopting ordinance number three, 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 one. The third item on our agenda is discussion, possible action for declaring an emergency clause pertaining to this ordinance, which, uh, would then allow it to go into effect, um, immediately. Um. Any discussion?
A second.
Who, who made the motion?
Jim.
Okay, Jim, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, well, again, we'll do, uh, a most, a voice vote by name, uh, Vice Mayor Case.
Aye.
Councilman Long.
Yes.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Bothroyd.
Aye.
Councilman Channel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Paget.
Aye.
Mayor Steve Gettling, yes. Uh, that is the last item on our agenda, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, everybody be safe.